Call this meeting of the Westland City Council order will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Haley Dillard and Bentley Sharkey, two students attending Wildwood Elementary.
The allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay right there, Councilman Godbow will come out to see you.
Well, thanks for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Why don't you just come up here and stand and face the big crowd here and the bigger crowd on TV that will see this later on, so. First, we're going to start off with Haley Dillard and her, she reported her name is Haley K. Dillard, and she's 10 years old and attends Wildwood Elementary in the fourth grade in Mrs. Patterson's class. She has a little brother who is three years old and she lives with her parents, Tyrone and Megan Dillard. She also has a dog, Karma. She is four, the dog is four years old, right? Your favorite subjects in school are reading and math and your favorite pastime is to play on your computer. What do you play on your computer?
I play games with my cousin.
Play games with your cousin? And what do you like about math?
I like, I like dividing sometimes.
Okay. Well, thank you for leading us in the pledge this evening and we have a certificate for you on behalf of the City Council and the administration. And if you'll change places with Bentley, I'm going to grill him next. This is Bentley Sharkey, who is nine years old, also in the fourth grade, but he's in Ms. Martin's class. So there's two fourth grades or?
There's three.
Three fourth grades, okay. You have four siblings and a dog. You play baseball and really like math. You also like solving puzzles and building stuff. What, what kind of stuff do you like to build?
Um, I do woodworking sometimes, so that kind of stuff.
Really? So if, if I need some trim work done on the, my house, you can come in and help me out?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we also have a certificate for you on behalf of the City Council and Administration and I'd like to invite up Mrs. Swanson, your principal, as well as the parents. So, Mrs. Swanson, why don't you tell us a little bit about your students and a little bit about what's going on at Wildwood?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So these are two of our finest fourth grade representatives. As you know, Wildwood is a K-5 elementary. We have 514 students right now, so we're nice and busy and full. Getting ready for our kindergarten roundup, so if there's anybody turning five next Thursday, come at 1 o'clock to our kindergarten roundup. Right now, we are working on preparing for all of our end-of-year assessments, making sure that we are working with our garden club and our 4-H extension office and doing some very interesting science projects.
Great. Parents have anything you'd like to add about your children?
No, they're being serious.
All right, great. Well, I think they want us to get in a little closer and they'll take a group. Thanks.
Roll call. Councilman Godbow.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Here.
President Hart.
Here.
A form is present. We'll move into special presentations and announcements. First, we have today, Maryam Katie, coming to represent Relay for Life. Great. Oh, I'm sorry, Friends of the Library. You do so much, Maryam, it's hard to keep track.
It's like I don't have my Relay for Life shirt on. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to have the time to speak on behalf of the Friends of the Library tonight. And in honor of March Reading Month at the Westland Library, we decided to have a March Children's Book Sale. We have an over an abundance of children's books and young adult books. So a couple of the ladies on the board thought, let's have a special St. Patrick's Day themed weekend sale. So on March, Saturday, March 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we are going to have a sale that day and a sale on Sunday, only two days only. Sunday is from 12:00 to 3:00 March 15th. So Saturday, March 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and Sunday, March 15th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And it's in the Faust area where the fireplace areas is a little different location than we normally have. And all of the children's books and young adult books are all 10 cents each. So we're having a really great sale. And also too, we're having, since this is a St. Patrick's Day themed sale, we are going to hide some shamrocks. So if you find a shamrock, then you will have a special surprise. So you have to come out and check that out. Please bring your family out or come on your own and thank you so much for letting us announce that. Thanks. Have a great day.
Thank you, Maryam. Next, we have Commissioner Glenn Anderson from the Wayne County.
Thank you, Council President, and Council members. Appreciate the opportunity to bring you a brief update. Today, I was at Governor Whitmer signing of a bill that creates a new program called Pay as You Stay. The county commission joined with the state in pushing for this change to help low-income homeowners stay in their homes. The program will waive interest fee, interest fees and penalties for those homeowners that are behind on their property taxes that qualify for hardship. It'll also provide an extended period of time for them to catch up on their taxes. As soon as their, as the homeowner files the property exemption and is qualified by the treasurer, the treasurer then will stop the foreclosure process and they'll proceed to the Pay as You Stay. It'll be very beneficial. I think they've already identified, at least in the city of Detroit, over 30,000 people that will be able to stay at their homes and their homes that'll qualify for this. But it, it's while the press conference and bill signing took place in Detroit, one thing important to note is the program is statewide. It's available to anyone statewide. All the details will be out in the near future. I'm sure they'll have brochures. We'll make sure we get them out to everyone, so if you get a question about it, there'll be that information. I'm hoping to have some type of a public event that people will be able to find out the details and hear someone from, that, that's very experienced with the program or got plenty of information to hand out to. And just a reminder that the next coffee hour is next Monday, March 9th, 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Library. Encourage anyone to come by, have a cup of coffee, doughnut, cookies, or whatever. It's a great place to have it and I look forward to seeing some of you there. Any questions? I'm, I'll be available. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move into questions or input on the agenda items from the public. Allow a person to be recognized at the beginning of the business meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Seeing none, we'll close. Citizens comments on the agenda, move into the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Councilman McDermott.
Uh, yes, regarding the, excuse me, I apologize. Regarding item E with the website, before the final version, through the Chair of the Administration, I apologize, in regards to item E with the website, are we going to, as a council, be able to see a final preview before the website is complete? Or are we going to be able to, I know you showed us a number of templates last time at our study session, provide input on which template for the website that we like best?
Craig.
If I may, Council Presidents, the final template, sure, be more than happy to provide that to the council. We are looking to incorporate all the residents of Westland to have some input on the design and the content that's going to be on the website. The website's for the residents, so we want them to help direct how the website's going to look, what type of content's going to be in there, so services can be provided to them faster, smarter, better.
Good. All right. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I had a question on item F for the Highland Landscaping contract. This contract is not going out to bid for what was stated, that they are going to retain their, the rate from previous contracts. And the recommendation is for us to authorize a three-year contract with a two-year extension. The contract under termination only gives the city the option to terminate the contract if the contractor should fail to provide the service. So basically, the city is locked into paying this at this rate, although it did not go out to bid for three years to the possibly five years. I would like to see a paragraph or a clause added to this contract that states that the city can terminate this contract for any reason with a 30-days written notice. This, the contract is the, essentially the business of the city, so this is our project and it is our money. And I do not think it is fiscally responsible or even wise to issue a contract, and I've said this on prior contracts, to issue a contract and essentially lock us in without knowing if the finances of the city change, changes, if we should opt to make a, an internal decision to hire staff to do it for a less expensive rate. We're basically locked in. And because this is not going out to bid, and from a business standpoint, I have never seen businesses lock themselves into agreements with outside contractors without a termination clause for any reason other than it's, it's regularly here at the city of Westland, but it's not wise. And if, again, if the finances change in the city, or we want to make an internal business decision to do some of this in-house, or whatever the circumstance is, we should have the right to cancel with a written notice. And if any contractor does not want to abide by those terms, I'm sure we could actually send it out to bid and find a reputable company who will. So I make a motion to add a clause or sentence under termination that gives the city of Westland the right to terminate this contract with a 30-days written notice.
Point of order, it's a consent calendar item, so if you want to deliberate or make a change on that motion, you'll have to remove it off the consent calendar and move it to new business. And then you can make your motions to amend.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I make a motion to move it to new business. Thank you.
There's a motion to move item F off the consent calendar, move to new business. Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call. Councilman Godbow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes and with your consent, we will make that item 1B. I'm sorry, 1A, 1A. All right, moving back to the original motion of the consent calendar. Is there any other discussion on the consent calendar? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of study session held February 24, 2020. Approval of request from the Downtown Development Authority to hold a Smooth Summer Nights Concert Series to be held on Tatten Park Grounds on Thursday, July 23, I'm sorry, July 23, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And August 13, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Approval of request from Economic Development to hold the city's annual outdoor movie night community gathering event to be held at Tatten Park on June 23, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Approval of request from the Westland Events Committee to hold the first annual All-American Craft Beer and Wine Event to be held on Tatten Park Grounds on May 30, 2020, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. Approval of bid for professional services related to the redesign of our city website. Administration recommended Civic Plus LLC, amount not to exceed $51,891. Approval of Hubbard Park easement agreement with the Westland Free Methodist Church. Last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of ordinance 177A1 in ordinance to amend section 110-2.1 of the Westland City Code to establish a six-month moratorium extension on applications for permits or licenses to establish new massage parlors. Moving to new business, item 1A. Approval of weed cutting contract extension with Highland Landscaping. The extension shall be for an additional three years with a two-year option at the city's discretion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Godbow, support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any? Mr. Fosso.
I just want to clarify a provision in the contract. Contract, paragraph 6, page 2, provides, "The parties recognize and agree that the contractor's services will be provided as needed by the city, and there is no guarantee by the city of any quantity of work to be performed by the contractor."
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. Through the Chair to the city attorney respectfully, that sentence is left up to interpretation. That could actually do, be the quantity of work. That does not specify that we have the option to terminate in the event that we would like to send this matter out to bid within the next three years, or if the city makes an internal business decision that it would be cost-effective for us to do some of this work in-house to save the city money. We cannot foresee the financial state of the city three to five years out, and that sentence can actually be interpreted as the quantity of work. When they get this contract, we are going to assign areas of the city for them to do, to mow, or whatever they're going to do. This states that there is no guarantee by the city of any quantity of work. This says nothing about our right, or our right to terminate with a 30-days written notice, so I would like to see it written into the contract.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent?
Is this on the change or?
This is the motion. This is the motion. There's, there's no proposed change. No motion's been made.
Well, I make a motion that the contract is revised to state, and I actually would like to see this on all city of Westland contracts. Again, I've never seen a business entity give contractors the absolute right to lock us into a business agreement unless they fail to do the work on a long-term contract. So I would make a motion, whether we exercise the right or not, from a business standpoint, I make a motion that the terminology be added to the contract that gives the city of Westland the right to terminate the contract with a 30-days written notice. Thank you.
There's a motion to amend with additional verbiage as described by Councilwoman Green. Is there any, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent?
Yes.
Roll call. On the motion to amend the contract to include that the city of Westland has the right to terminate the contract with a 30-day notice, Councilman Godbow.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
No.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. You're back to item 1A. Back to item 1A, now approve the agenda, excuse me, approve the item as modified. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion passes as modified. New business, item 1. Request to go into closed study session immediately to discuss litigation Nelson versus the city of Westland. Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski.
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Need a roll call. Correct. Roll call, thank you. Give me one second here. Councilman Godbow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Councils to move to the council conference room. New business, item 2. Return to open meeting. Need a motion. Ceremony. Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries. New business, item 3. Approval of attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation as discussed in the closed study session, Nelson versus city of Westland.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Godbow, support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. New business, item 4. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held February 18, 2020. Motion by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call. Councilman Godbow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Abstain due to absence.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 5. Confirmation of appointment of Gretchen Heinecke to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a partial term with the term to expire February 5, 2022.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilman Londo, support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Gretchen, stand up, be recognized. New business, item 6. Confirmation of appointment of Deanna Adams Statchow to the Westland Planning Commission for a three-year term with the term to expire March 2, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Did I get the wrong motion?
No, I'm just laughing.
Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Deanna? New business, item 7. Confirmation of appointment of Ruby Richards to the Westland Planning Commission for a three-year term with the term to expire March 2, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Ruby.
Ruby? New business, item 8. Confirmation of appointment of Don Nicholson to a vacant position on the Westland Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the term to expire December 31, 2021. Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbow. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Nicholson. Approval to accept the city of Westland's statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Motion by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Roll call. Councilman Godbow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 10. Approval of voucher. Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Godbow. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to comments from the citizens. This time, you'll be recognized for up to three minutes to go ahead and address the council and the administration on any questions or concerns you might have. Citizens will have up to three minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak shall be heard. Is there anyone on my right?
Hello, William Asper. I wanted to spend a moment to talk about the upcoming millage vote. The millage, as everyone knows, is supposed to produce about $1.75 million. The things I remembered, which I don't know if there are any businesses that have given tax abatements yet, is that we're going to be having some marijuana retail stores. We're also going to be having a new subdivision that's built, that's going to be adding a lot more revenue to the city. I don't know if that was taken into account, oh, shoot, taken into account with the, the millage rate? Okay, that was my main question, concern. At the sanitation meeting, going back about a month ago, the sanitation owner said that, when I was speaking, if there isn't a second round of, second wave of trucks, there's still going to be trash there. Of course there is. But then, there's people that are still going to be, have trash left after second rounds or third rounds. The financial director, I spoke to him later on, actually, and I did the math, and the city spends approximately about $30,000 per wave. That's $180,000 a month for six, six waves of pickups. So two waves every, for fake recycling, every month, times 12, it's 24, and it equates to about $750,000. to about $750,000 that the city is wasting on the second wave. Seeing Facebook posts for people who have their cans taken away from the city, the second cans, now they are doing bulk pickups, which is going to cost the city even more. I don't know the price difference on it. It just, it's not economic for the city to take away second cans and then force the resident to do a special, or to do a special pickup, which is going to cost the city more money. I would just ask that whoever on the board, the council, whatever it is, just think about that going forward on how to lower the spending of the city, especially in regards to the economic, or for the sanitation department. If you have, of course, I'm against the millage vote. If you have already voted and want to change your vote, you can always do what's called spoil your ballot, which you would go in and just change it all around. Has the ballots, have they been counted yet? None at all? Because I saw Facebook that there were, the votes were tallied for the Democratic and Republican, so I just figured that someone's been counting them. Have a good night.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone else on my right? Seeing none, we'll close citizens' comments, move on to comments from the administration.
Appreciate council's approval tonight, moving forward with four wonderful people and their appointments tonight. The mayor sends his wishes and thanks you for serving. He's out ill tonight, so he had me sit in, and we appreciate you still coming out and volunteering and getting appointed. So, we got four wonderful people that are going to serve, they got great resumes, and we appreciate everything you're going to do for the city. Thanks. And last thing would be, Council President, if you, if you could maybe in your comments just give an update on how the Pet Vaccination Day, Dog Day in Westland went, and give some stats for their folks at home.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing from the attorney. Move on to comments from the council. Councilmember Hersberg, let me find your button.
Thank you. Nothing further tonight, just quick congratulations to Deanna, Ruby, Don, and Gretchen. I know you guys will do good work, and you've been around the city a long time, and you're well-prepared to get started. And then just want to remind everybody to vote March 10th. If you just moved to the city, you can update your registration, you can register to vote the same day, so there's no excuse. You can get out and vote. There's two ballot proposals, and best of luck to the clerk's office and all the election workers.
Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I'd like to start tonight by congratulating everyone who was sworn into a commission. Would like to thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you on behalf of the City of Westland. Also would like to announce that I will have a coffee hour coming up on Saturday, March 21st, at 10:00 a.m. It will be at the Westland Public Library. I am excited to be able to offer lots of information about what's going on here in the city, what you can expect in the near future, and also different programs and options that will be available for senior citizens and those who may have income concerns relative to day-to-day living. So, lots of good information will be provided again, once again, Saturday, March 21st, 10:00 a.m., Westland Public Library. In addition, as most people know, the census is coming up. The census is actually very important to complete. I know it can be a hassle for some people, but that actually is millions of dollars for our schools, roads, and other public services in every local community. So, it is very important to complete the census. We've lost millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars, just in the state of Michigan. So, we're looking forward to that. One of the ways that it has become much more convenient this time around, you know, as opposed to 10 years ago, is that people will be able to complete the census online for an additional, as an additional convenience, and also there will be an 800 number that you will find on the applications that will be coming out in the next few weeks. Everyone should have their census application right around the first week of April or less. But if you have not completed the census application online or via telephone, that's when you can expect a knock at your door. So if you're one of those people who would prefer no visitors, please try and complete it, you know, at your convenience. You can also return it via mail, so that's something to keep on your radar. Also would like to remind people that we have a big election next week on Tuesday, March the 10th, here in the City of Westland and actually all over, that Michigan will be voting in the Democratic primary. Our polls will open at 7 o'clock in the morning and be open all day until 8:00 p.m. You can also vote via absentee ballot for an additional, as an additional convenience. If you're not able to make it on Election Day, some employers do not, you know, give employees time off to do that. So, absentee ballot is always another option. You can contact the clerk's office if you'd like to have an application for absentee ballot mailed to your home. And just as FYI, for anyone, I know multiple people, thousands of people have already voted via absentee ballot, within the last 72 hours, three Democratic candidates dropped out of the race. So if you are one of the people who completed an absentee ballot and you already turned it in, if you voted for Pete Buttigieg, Amy Klobuchar, or Tim Steyer, they all dropped out of the race within the last 72 hours. So the only people that are, you will see the names on the ballots, but the people who are still in the race is Joe Biden, Michael Bloomberg, Bernie Sanders, Elizabeth Warren, and Tulsi Gabbard has not officially announced that she has dropped out, although she is being encouraged to do so. So, it'll be those five people. Again, if you voted for anyone who has recently dropped out, there was a gentleman who came to the microphone, if you voted via absentee ballot and you would like to change your vote to vote for someone who is actually still in the running, you can contact the clerk's office and do, as he stated, which is called spoil, spoil your ballot. So, one way to kind of keep that in mind is like you think of spoiled milk. It's called spoil your ballot, which basically means that your absentee ballot will be destroyed, the one that you submitted or mailed in, and then you'd be able to get a new absentee ballot and change your vote. So that's something that you can do up to Election Day. Also would like to just thank the Michigan Municipal League for the training over the weekend. Several of us went to training in Frankenmuth for, you know, our positions, just ongoing education, and it was, it was phenomenal. Lots of budgeting, financing, and different operational information was provided. So I'm very thankful for that, and which gives me the ability to serve the community on a much stellar level. So, just wanted to say thank you for that. Look forward to seeing you in another two weeks. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout?
Yes, I'd like to start this evening by wishing Arthur Warren a happy birthday.
Got him.
I'd also like to congratulate Ruby and Deanna on their appointments to the Planning Commission, Gretchen to the Tifa Board, and Don Nicholson to our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I'm sure you all do a great job in those roles. And the only other thing I have is I'd like to extend my condolences to Gail and the McKnight family on the passing of Dick McKnight, who lost his battle with Parkinson's after 25 years. Dick served on the Livonia School Board for eight years, including Board Chair. He also led the 13th Democratic Party for, 13th District Party for six years, including leading the delegation to the Democratic National Convention in New York in 1992 and in Chicago in 1996. He also served as a catechism teacher at St. Mary's Church in Wayne, and once he was diagnosed with Parkinson's, Dick took a very active role in the Parkinson's Action Network, lobbying on behalf, both at the House and Senate, to fund research for Parkinson's disease. So, just please keep the McKnight family in your prayers. And I too just wish to encourage everyone, if they haven't already, to remember to vote on March 10th. Thanks.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Good evening, everyone. I too would like to thank Don, Gretchen, Deanna, and Ruby for stepping up to the call and, and putting their names in and subsequently being selected for their boards. I think you'll do a great job, and like I've said in previous meetings, it's the role of the active citizen that really is the foundation of our community, and we greatly appreciate everything that you, you do for all of us. I was one of the individuals that had the pleasure of attending MML training, it's Michigan Municipal League training, this past weekend. It was very informative, I've enjoyed it very much, and I was also very honored to have been granted a Tim Doyle Scholarship so that my registration was covered. Mr. Doyle was a former council member in Durand, and upon his passing, his wife started a scholarship in his name because he believed that elected officials should continue their educational pursuits so that they can be effective leaders. So, I'd like to thank Deb Doyle and the Michigan Municipal League for allowing me to attend that training. On Friday, before we left for our training, we honored a local veteran, Mr. Avery Hall, who left our community when he was 17 years old to serve his country in the Korean War. And he is 85 years young, and he is the first graduating member of the class of 2020 at Wayne Memorial High School. So, what an honor. It's just wonderful to see our community embracing him and completing a portion of his life that he sacrificed for all of us. He did dedicate 20 years of his life to protecting our freedoms. So, Mr. Hall, thank you so much for your service, and congratulations on your graduation. March is Women's Month, and it is also when we recognize our distinguished young women in the City of Westland. So, this Friday at 6:30 at our Stock Meyer Auditorium at Wayne Memorial High School, we will have the celebration of our 53rd showcase of Wayne Westland's distinguished young women. I'd like to wish all of the young women participating the best of luck, and I will be there rooting for all of you. And I think that's going to be it for me today. Good evening.
Councilman McDermott?
Well, thank you. I too would like to extend my congratulations to Gretchen Heinecke, Deanna Statchow, Ruby Richards, and Don Nicholson for their continued service in our community. It's no easy task, and I know that we don't always get a lot of people that want to step up and do these boards and commissions, so thank you for taking time out of your life with all the work that you already do around the community to extend it to this as well. So we're all greatly appreciative of the work that you're doing for us. And then, just want to remind everybody, like my colleagues have said, the election is coming up on Tuesday, and as Councilwoman Green had mentioned, you can spoil your ballot if you have voted for a candidate on either side of the aisle who has since dropped out of the race, and you can come back up here to City Hall and request a new ballot and fill that ballot out so that you are able to vote for one of the candidates on the Democratic or Republican side who is still in the race. Had a great time at the NML Conference with my colleagues. It's a very informative, two-day, you know, seminar and training session with the Michigan Municipal League. I think it's really important that we're all willing to, you know, grow and learn as council people. Certainly, we don't know everything, and it's our responsibility to be the best and do the best job that we can for all of you out there. And so, certainly had a great time and a very, certainly learned a lot at this past weekend's MML training. And then I too would like to send my condolences out to Gail McKnight and her family in the passing. Dick McKnight is a member of, one of our local organizations here in the Westland Democratic Club I got to know. Both Gail and Dick are quite well these last couple of years, and they were very active, not only in the club, but obviously in the greater Westland community and area over a number of years. So, certainly my condolences go out to Gail and the McKnight family. And nothing further from me tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Hart. I just want to start off tonight by congratulating our 2019 Officer of the Year, Jason Neville, and to all the other award winners. That was also Friday night. Friday night was a big day for various events, and we couldn't be everywhere. Unfortunately, we were, five of us were up at the MML Conference, so congratulations to all the award winners. Great job, chief. Also, congratulations to Gretchen Heinecke on her appointment to the Tax Increment Finance Authority, both Deanna Statchow and Ruby Richards on the Planning Commission. You got some veterans on the side of you over there. If you ever have any questions or need advice, Lori's been on it for what, 21 years? 20 years? So, they'll steer in the right direction, and you guys are going to do a great job. And also, Don, where's Don? There's Don. Congratulations on the Parks appointment as well, and thank you for all your time on the other boards that you've served in. On the agenda, there's a few things that kind of got passed over, just wanted to take a minute to mention them. We have the Smooth Summer Nights and the All-American Craft Beer and Wine Event. The Smooth Summer Nights is going to be a new concert series that the Downtown Development Authority is going to put on with Alexander Zancheck. Is that how you say it, Jim? Alexander Zancheck. It's going to be a great event. He's going to do some great cross-promoting at all his other events. If anybody knows Alexander, he's got a radio show, he does a lot of TV spots. He also has huge events in Dearborn and other events locally, so he's going to really, really push the Westland event. I don't have those, do you know the dates? I don't have the dates in front of me. No, it's, yeah, I don't have them in front of me. Maybe Mr. President Godbout can get them to me. Also, the All-American Craft Beer and Wine Event. I need that date as well. That's coming up, so please, you know, as a community that's rallied around these events, these are both brand-new events to the City of Westland, so spread the word, tell your neighbors and friends. The social media page on this, thank you, social media page on City of Westland will be sure to post all this stuff. All right, so the concert series is going to be Thursday, July 23rd, from 6:30 until 8:30, and the other one will be Thursday, August 13th, from 6:30 to 8:30. That coincides with the Westland Farmers and Artisan Market, so come on out at 3:00, purchase your locally homegrown items, and artisan, and get your seats and prepare for a great show. And then the other event, the Craft Beer and Wine Event, is going to be, where is it? Here, it's not on there. May 30th.
May 30th.
May 30th. And thank you to Councilman Godbout for mentioning and reading some great words about Dick McKnight. I had a chance to stop by the funeral on my way to Frankenmuth for the MML. Wasn't sure which council members were going. I know a few had mentioned they couldn't go, so I went on their behalf as well. And speaking of the Michigan Municipal League Elected Officials Academy, I was there with myself, President Hart, Councilwoman Green, Councilwoman Rakowski, and Councilman McDermott. We were in two separate classes, so three of us were in the advanced class, and our two newbies were in the newly-elected class. So, you know, as your elected representative, I believe it's very important to continue to, you know, educate myself on, on everything that comes with this job, so I really enjoy those conferences. It's really a great networking event, too. I mean, you meet people from all types of cities, townships, and villages all across the state of Michigan, so. Last two things, I want to thank the Westland Chamber of Commerce for hosting an after-hours event called Meet Your Elected Officials. I think it's very important to have a positive worker relationship with the business community, and thank you to those that showed up and grilled us. They really didn't grill us. You fed us well and had some great, great networking there as well. And then speaking of the chamber, they're also doing their 2020 Health and Business Expo, and that's going to be March 14th. I got that date here, at Westland Shopping Center. There's going to be 30 local businesses. Aubrey's is going to be there doing a gift card raffle, so great opportunity to see some of our local businesses and healthcare providers, and also nonprofit organizations. And I'll also echo the comments, please get out and vote on March 10th, and I'm sure the clerk's office would greatly appreciate it if you wanted to spoil your ballot, do it ASAP and not wait till Election Day. Thank you.
You're not allowed to do it on Election Day.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you to everybody for taking away anything I had to talk about, as usual. But first of all, I'd like to thank Haley and Bentley for coming out and leading us with the pledge today. It's always fun to see the kids come out, as always. Congratulations to our new board and commission folks, Don, Deanna, Ruby, Gretchen. Everybody else said congratulations, I'll do the same thing. Looking forward to you participating in those boards and giving, providing leadership and working with your colleagues to make great things happen here. I did also have a chance with Councilman Rakowski to go and see Sergeant First Class Avery Hall. Again, he's an 85-year-old man. He actually left high school to go serve in the Korean War in the 50s. He was at Wayne Memorial High School. He left, went to go serve in the war, had a wonderful career in the United States Military, made it to E7 Sergeant First Class, retired from the Army, and then worked for the school district for another 20 years, working with kids, and then he came back, and we were actually really pleased to not only see him get, graduate, and deliver some remarks from a very wise and very experienced man. Got to deliver a plaque, and I got to talk to him briefly as well. It was really neat to see an 85-year-old man there, sitting in correct US Army dress blues. Everything on his uniform was perfect. I even checked it real quick. So, he did a really good job. He looked sharp, as always, and the man was very proud. But one of the messages he had was to the kids to, no matter what happens, stay in school, work hard, listen to your parents, be good citizens. He was just there a role model. It was really important, and he really felt-- he had a strong passion for the kids of our community and any community in school. He did it in the school district, and it really meant a lot to him to come out and not only get his diploma, and us to be able to see him walk across the stage, but also to be able to just give some words of advice and encouragement to those kids who are in school. So, that was fun. Pet Vaccination Day, so I don't know if you guys saw that over the weekend. We do this kind of every year. We'll bring the pets in. We'll do vaccinations. They're doing microchipping, and they're getting your registration for the city, getting